I will now call to order the February 8, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Nancy Bush, you're substituting for Gary Schmidt today. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, first to introduce staff, we have Stephen Magcor here as our county council, and Tony Mayernick as clerk to the board. Commissioner Schrader is out today. Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Present.
Chair Smith?
Here, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you when to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. C O O O, Nancy Bush?
Yes.
Can you introduce the first item?
Yes, first up, we have the Consent Agenda, and Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of a board order appointing Justice Court pro temp judges for one year, no fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved for the Justice Court. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a contract with Elk Mountain Construction Incorporated for the East Barlow Trail Road at mile post 1.65 project. Total value is $482,520, funding through federal emergency relief program funds and county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Finance, item one, approval of a contract with Vitane Construction LLC for the Pamplin Building Single Ply Membrane Re Roof Project. Total contract value is $215,000. Funding is through seller credit on the purchase agreement. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of amendment number one, increasing funding and duration of a grant agreement, the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, to continue administering the Oregon Eviction Prevention and Diversion Program. Amendment value is $1,924,121 for 17 months. Agreement value is increased to $3,807,357 for two years. Funding is through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for the Oregon Money Management Program. Agreement value is $486,437 for two years. Funding is through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of revenue grant agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for overdose prevention projects. Agreement value is $766,000 for two years. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a personal services contract with Full Time Incorporated for peer support services. Contract value $1,960,742 for 3.5 years. Funding is through fees for services. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair moved that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes for zero. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District Board of Directors. Nancy?
Yes, next is the Consent Agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Districts. So, Tony, could you please read the agenda?
One item, approval of a board order authorizing a purchase order under a cooperative contract with U.S. Foods for the Milwaukee Community Center Nutrition Program. Purchase order value is $280,000 for 1.25 years, funding through federal grants, donations, and contributions, and North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District General Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Does any director wish to remove anything off of this consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Savis has moved for the approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, and Director West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director West?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Director Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and convene as a Water Environment Services Board of Directors.
So, next up, we have the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item one, approval of our resolution adopting the Water Environment Services Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2024, 2025 through 2028, 2029. No fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of amendment number two with Corolo Engineers Incorporated for engineering services necessary to design the Clackamas Area Interceptor Project. Amendment value is $265,300. Total contract value is increased to $4,293,111 for 3.5 years. Funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Clackamas County Development Agency relating to the Southeast Monroe Street Improvements Project. Total value is $209,740, funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any director wish to remove anything off of this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Scholl has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda, and Director Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Director Savis?
Aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and convene as a Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Nancy?
Yes, next is the Consent Agenda for the Development Agency. So, Tony, please read the Consent Agenda.
One item, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Water Environment Services relating to the Southeast Monroe Street Improvements Project. Total value is $209,740, funding through Water Environment Services Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any director wish to remove any item? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Savis has moved for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Director Scholl has seconded the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director West?
Aye.
Director Scholl?
Aye.
Director Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. We are already at public communication. Holy moly, we're going through this fast. Yee-haw. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon law and statute and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anybody in the room who would like to come forward and testify or talk to the commissioners? Now is the opportunity for anybody in the room who would like to come forward. Tony, do we have any cards in the basket?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
I will begin with Mr. Les Poole. Mr. Poole, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Mr. Poole, you are muted.
Hello?
We can hear you now, sir.
Can you hear me? Yeah, we got a bad connection. Am I coming through at all?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Zoom can be fun. Appreciate the opportunity to share some thoughts today. Time is flying. I realized it's February, and I know the initial inklings and efforts towards drafting and creating a budget for the upcoming year are already out there. And a message from folks in general, my life and my work takes me around Oregon quite a bit, and I see themes, I see recurring messages, and I'm going to give you a recurring message, one that you're hearing elsewhere. Right now, the legislature is in short session. The governor, true to form, wants to throw hundreds of millions of dollars around, and we're not really getting the value out of what's going on. I'll just put it that way. We're spending a fortune on homelessness in Oregon, and yet the results have been mediocre. A shining star in all of that has been Clackamas County. After all of the turmoil over project turnkey and big investment in converting hotels or motels, we now have a much better direction, and I think it's something that is much more likely to succeed, and certainly a better investment of the public's money. A couple of other thoughts for you today. One is, of course, the uncertainty of tolling and what it really means is still out there. It's very difficult for folks to track with what's going on because there's more than one plan for how tolling may work. And I encourage folks again to go to my Clackamas Live Facebook page. At the top of the page, there's a link so you can sign a petition. Very critical that this issue be placed before the voters. ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation, has not been straight with us, and we don't have enough time today for me to explain that, but certainly it's true. And I'll conclude with one last thought, and that is that I see the crime problem in Portland growing, and I see the crime problem in general growing in spite of the numbers. I've spoken with some in law enforcement out there, and one thing they're hearing is that a lot of crimes are not even being reported. The authorities are being overwhelmed.
Go ahead.
And I'm just really concerned that we spend our money carefully on crime and crime prevention, and I'm very grateful that the commission did fund the sheriff's office fully last year. We heard all kinds of rumors otherwise, but again, a good job by the county. I know you folks are in a difficult place. I appreciate the opportunity, as I said earlier, to speak, and thank you.
Thank you. Up next?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Again, I will ask if there's anyone in the room who would like to come forward and testify. Now is your opportunity. Seeing no one. It's amazing, isn't it? I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting. Nancy, what's next?
So, I do have one announcement today. Just a reminder that next week, the commissioners are on recess, and there will be no county commissioner meetings next week. And now, Commissioner, I mean Chair Smith, we are to Commissioner Communication.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Up first, Commissioner West.
I don't need to let you call on me. Thank you, Chair. This is my last meeting until April, so I will be doing some service for the United States Navy, and will be gone in NACO, and then for the United States Navy, I'll be doing some work in Rhode Island. So, I'll miss all of you while I'm gone. I'll try to check in as much as I can. Had a very interesting meeting with the chamber in Camby yesterday. They wanted to talk in depth about two issues. Addiction and housing and homelessness in the area is, of course, top of mind for business owners and small businesses, and really all of us, but also they wanted to get up to speed with tolling, as it has been an ever-moving issue that is also quite complicated. And we've, you know, explaining to them how Clackamas County's been on the forefront and the spearhead on the local level with our 16 cities galvanized together to try to stop the tolling scheme. They seem to be a little bit more energized as a chamber to maybe jump in and participate and advocate in their own community, along with, like, Wilsonville, who's a chamber that has come out against tolling and has concerns from the business community all along, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think also the Toowalatin Chamber has some serious concerns. I also believe North Clackamas does, too. So, we're starting to see the business community really galvanize along with us to try to deal with this tolling issue. I don't think it's going to be much of an issue in the short session as the legislature tackles some. The big issue they're tackling there is addiction and homelessness on Measure 110. But that was a good conversation to have. You know, I also encourage them to reach out to you, Commissioner Savis, if they wanted even a little bit more of a whiteboard lesson or education, so you might be giving a phone call, as many of us look to your expertise and experience in that arena. I don't have much more to add, and I wish everybody a really awesome spring break, and I hope we get drier weather soon, and I look forward to being with you guys all again in early April.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Just to piggyback on what you said, I spoke with the North Clackamas County Chamber of Commerce as well, and they are very concerned about tolling. And the common theme was, a lot of people don't know it's coming. They're still not aware, which is rather alarming. Up next, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, that topic will be keeping me busy, including next week. I don't know how many of the 10 or more meetings I got going next week are related to tolling, probably a lot of them. I didn't really count that, but I hope you all have a great recess. I'll be working. But what I wanted to talk about today a little bit, I know that there's going to be, in light of Commissioner West's dedication to serving the Navy on behalf of our country, thank you for that, and I know that you'll be this one-time exercise that's going to take some time. We'll miss you. But I do want to take this opportunity, it's our last meeting till April, with you present, and just want to, at least Commissioner Scholl and I had talked about and put on the agenda a long time ago, requested, agenda request per county ordinance for board rules, and I wanted to get that back on the table. So, Commissioner Scholl, are you still on board with that?
Yes, I'd be happy to look at revision, at least examination of all board rules.
Yeah, because it came up yesterday, so, you know, getting clarity what the board rules are is simply just good go-to-order and good process, and apparently efforts to do that here and there are misinterpreted. So, let's just make that official. Two commissioners are requesting to have that put on per county ordinance. And lastly, I just want to just say that I was a little bit disappointed to learn yesterday. I didn't know it till yesterday, but the work we did talking about Commissioner West's resolution, or driven by Commissioner West for Measure 110, it was sad to hear that that was put aside. I thought that it was going to come back. So, I, again, I really thought that we were going to find a medium, a happy medium, in which we would bring that back, and the board would have a position. So, you know, I just want to just express my disappointment, and Commissioner West, if you have any feedback on that, I'd appreciate it. You don't need to respond if you don't want to, but I just want to just express my disappointment that it didn't come back. And I know that's not your doing.
Do you want me to respond? Would you like me to respond?
Oh, are you done?
I'm done.
Go ahead.
Hey, I brought forth, for the public's memory, I brought forth a policy one-pager. It's been revised a number of times. It's been worked on for a couple of months. I believe most of my colleagues have had the opportunity to review it. We had a long debate on how we were going to approach this a week or two ago, maybe three weeks ago, and approached this issue about going into the short session, also not just for the short session, but allow us to use it in talking points with media, with constituents, a clear policy position that is really congruent with all of our allies in this effort regarding Measure 110, to be on the website, along with our Clackamas County Recovery Summit, along with our resolution, along with how we've been doing things a little bit differently. We spoke, I mean, Les Poole testified today that we are a bright spot in Oregon on this issue. I won't be here to, if it gets on the agenda, then I won't be here to vote on it, because I'll be gone, but I believe a motion was made to work on that. It hasn't come back up yet. It seems to be a little bit stalled, but I've had conversations with all my colleagues, all respectful, and I've made my point on why I think it's important, and why we should move forward with it, and been clear in that. And so, you guys are more than welcome to continue to work on that if you also agree in my absence. I've had a constructive conversation with the Chair also on this, so I think, I'd like to see it move forward. I think a lot of work's gone into it, but I'll leave it at that. But I hope it is not dead, because there was still a motion or a resolution to work on something, and we still should do that work.
As a matter of fact, we did pass a motion with exact language on this, and I was very clear on what we did, and that has been given to our Public and Government Affairs people, and they are using it in the legislature. You and I've had a discussion on this, and I was very clear on it, that our points need to be very concise and accurate and short, because as in this session, it's going to be fast and furious. And to all of our credit, Clackamas County has been a leader on this issue. As a matter of fact, yesterday, we revised our questions to the voters in May on taking up this issue. We removed one question, because the legislature is indeed taking up this issue. The other question, I think, is very good, and we're just offering to voters, if the legislature does not act, to repeal Measure 110, and it's very, very simple. And as I've explained to you, Commissioner West, the best part of communication is when your language is succinct. This resolution was really, really long, and I asked you if you would pare it down. I have not seen a pared-down version yet, and I said, if you want to do that, I would be more than happy to take it up. So, if you want to send me a pared, just to make it easier to digest, because I've been in the legislature during special sessions, and this particular session is going to be fast and furious. I don't want legislators to take, oh, golly, here's Clackamas County, this big, long thing, and just throw it in. We also passed this week a very concise and accurate position on the Third Lane on Stafford, and I think that was very well done. We had our input, and we pared down some language on that. Sure enough, the newspapers picked it up and reported on the article. That's all I'm asking for folks on this. Commissioner Savis, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just to follow, I was the person who made the motion regarding the 110 measure, and I think that, from talking to my colleagues, most of my colleagues, that we all expected, no, colleagues I spoke to, three of us, four of us, thought it would indeed come back. That was what the motion was. So, that was my recollection, and there was a draft framework to come back that was pared down, but it was, we were supposed to add meat to the bones, if you will, just a term there. That was not a term I used there, but I thought that we would fill in some of the necessary stuff, but I just, and I thought that was happening behind the scenes. Again, I didn't know until yesterday that that effort was essentially dead or stalled.
Actually, it's not dead. If any commissioner wants to take up that document and work on it, I'm not going to rewrite this entire document for the board and have it be rejected, but I think it's up to Commissioner West on this and see pendent. If you want to take all the commissioner's ideas, pare it back, I'd be willing, and I said that yesterday to you. Okay? We're going to move on.
Chair, just for the record, I was cut off, but I'll just leave it there.
Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Good morning, Clackamas County. Right now, I like to speak to the most important people in American politics. Who would that be? That would be you, the citizen. You have the power of the vote. You have the power to influence family, neighbors, community, cities, counties, and the nation. May is the primary. You can help our county clerk by going to the Secretary of State website or the county clerk website for a link to update your voter registration, to make sure your voter affiliation and your address is correct, so the ballot goes to the right place. Know your candidates and know the issues. May is a critical vote. On tolling, two weeks ago, the state of Oregon Human Resources announced an advertisement to hire a state administrator of tolling. We need public action. Go to votebefortolls.org, sign the petition, IP4, have the family sign it, have your neighbors sign it, have everybody in your town sign it, and return it as soon as possible, and let's get that on the ballot in November. In 1978, a horror movie came out called Invasion of the Body Snatchers. Do not allow the producers in Salem and ODOT to do a sequel called The Invasion of the Money Snatchers: Gantry's from Hell. Your action is crucial to stop tolling. Only you, the citizen, at this point in time, can do that. On the demise of Measure 110, this morning, I heard from a man who had been on the streets, an addict for over two decades. Incarceration took him off the streets and into a situation in which he was able to get off killer drugs. He advocates for the full repeal of Measure 110 and the return of jail time for public use of drugs as a tool to force environmental change in the state of Oregon. He does not advocate for a modification of a measure that has harmed this state, a measure called 110. Please recall also, on this issue, that in January of last year, the city of Portland did outreach and contacted 1,700 people on the street who had been involved in drug use. And out of 1,700 people who were offered a place off the street and addiction recovery help, only two out of that number accepted help. Two out of 1,700 people. That proves that only the bite of law enforcement will return our streets to safety and our people to healthy futures and productivity. Today, this morning, as we sit here, our state legislature is struggling with this very issue, and it's not too late for every citizen to get on And it's not too late for every citizen to get on the phone, call your state rep, and let them know that you want Measure 110 repealed, you want safety, and you want real compassion for humanity to return to Oregon. Take action now. On government, despite years of government trying to hold down income taxes on the poor, now, in many of our states, those taxation on poor people is increasing. Why? It's because government in most areas is out of control. The power to collect taxes is crucial in order to meet basic government services. But it's also crucial for families and small business that levels of government taxation not be one penny over what is needed to fund a frugal, limited government. But here are the facts. As of 08/51 this morning, the national debt was $34 trillion, 213 billion, 623 million, When I last reported to you on this subject on September 19th of last year, the debt that morning had just hit 23 trillion. Unfunded debt across the nation, unfunded expenses across the nation stand at 97-point trillion, 97.6 trillion dollars this morning. Wake up, America. You're being driven into the potential to become just a memory in the history of the world. History shows us that what is happening in America has happened before. Choke down government now. Every citizen must get involved. Like I said before, the citizen is the person, the people in this nation with true political power. The May primary is a good opportunity to start whittling down government. And with that, I wish you all a good day.
Would you pass that down to Paul? Here you go. I am up next, and I have a handout for Commissioners. Oh, would you hand that to Stephen Magcor? Thank you. You know, I've been meeting with the tri-chairs of the other counties, and we're mainly discussing the supported housing services tax. It's an income tax on people who live inside the metro boundary that is funding a lot of the homeless services programs. Metro, as I've told you folks before, and it's been in the newspaper, has come out with the idea to either increase the tax, extend the tax, make the tax permanent. There are about seven years left on this. It was a 10-year tax. And from the three jurisdictions, it has been met with somewhat opposition, and I'll read you this, how the tri-chairs are going to move forward on it. We've had a lot of meetings. There's been some polling on it, although I think the polling is a little bit dubious on what to do. My main point on this is why now? I do not think that local governments have earned the right, have earned the taxpayers' trust to ask for yet another tax or another extension on homeless when we still have a large homeless population out there. Let's go a few more years, because it's taken an entire year of the 10-year measure to collect the tax. So, that, that's an issue, too. And so, the tri-chairs that came up with these goals, and I have not had an opportunity except for now to present this, because I just got this last night. We met on Monday night, and the chair from Washington County, Catherine Harrington, presented it to her board, and I just wanted to present these ideas to, to our board. Number one, assess what we need to do over the life of the current measure, seven years to meet the SHS goals. And we need to establish a baseline. How much is it going to cost? Evaluate what it would cost to end chronic homelessness with several scenarios based on different inflow and outflow of assumptions. What is the cost to end chronic homelessness? Look at the current affordable housing capacity, land inventories, state resources, and constraints, and identify gaps. Basically, that's a housing needs analysis, and it's not been done. Four, determine if housing funds would flow through the three counties or the seven housing jurisdictions that implemented the housing bond. Now, the housing bond is different than this. Do we want to continue giving the money to the counties, having the counties spend it, or go through the housing governance? A whole different issue. One of the reasons for the extension of this tax was, the thinking is that local governments that can bond to borrow more money through a bond and use some of this money to make the payments, basically is what it means. Number five, articulate the overall benefits of the reform package. Do the benefits outweigh the risk? And number six, explore what we can do now within the current measure to blend both uses, working toward the ideal state until polling and the political landscape is stronger, basically a bridge plan. And what we're finding is the monies that's coming in, it's for services, but we have to put people in a place in order to give them services. And the local jurisdictions are saying, well, we can use this for sticks and bricks. Some of the metro folks says, well, you can't. We need to fix it so we can use it for sticks and bricks. So, there is some back and forth going on with this. They're convening a roundtable to talk about this. I think coming out in November of this year for a tax increase, I think it'll fail. I don't want to say an increase. Well, it is an increase, because if you perpetuate the time, over time, it's more of a tax, correct? I, I don't think we're going to get one shot at this. I don't want to be hasty. I don't want to move too fast if the people want to extend it. We just had some reports recently that housing in Oregon has increased by 8% and almost 30% to our neighbors to the north, whereas Clackamas County and Washington County, the homeless population has decreased. We're very happy about that. But there's still a lot of situations. This is just notes of our meeting on what the tri-chairs could come up with. This is not something that's law. This is not something that we have voted on. These are the pitfalls as we see going forward. I just wanted to bring before the board for discussion and look at that. All the lights have lit up. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I think the theme I want to start with here is, you know, I think at times, I don't think the right hand knows what the left hand's doing. And I mean that at a big scale. So, this is not a criticism. It's an observation of what's wrong in this state. And so, knowing the history, being around when this supportive housing measure was put on the ballot, and I think that's really what these six things are speaking to. You know, thereafter, after it passed by the voters and the way it was brought forth was done in this very, I think, really a narrow, a narrow scope, not recognizing the big issues. And the funding was then followed by an invitation plan, which continued that narrow scope and didn't allow some of the basic, or cover some of the basic needs out there that would help people out of homelessness. Sure, it did some, and it was great that a lot of monies are available, and there is a substantial amount of monies that are, have been, have gone unused at this point in all the counties. So, as we're building up that capacity and building up all those needs, I'm sure we'll be using up more of those dollars. So, it's not as though there's a continued or foreseeable excess, but there may be. That said, things like basic food, food insecurity is something that is not really covered by the measure, based on a response that I got here just even, even this week. Mental health provision or mental health facilities is not allowed to be funded by this. Recovery systems and staffing for such is not really allowed by this use, per se. So, it's narrow. And it was like it was done somewhat of a vacuum, and now we have our state legislature that is working on a measure that was put into place by the voters right around the same time this, this supportive housing measure was on the ballot, not the same exact election date. One was in May, one was in November. But nonetheless, the right hand does not know what the left hand's doing.
Thank you. I'm, who's next? Does it matter?
Ben West, Wes.
Commissioner West, go ahead.
So, we got very disturbing news that, and very saddening news, that Oregon's seeing over a 10% increase in its homeless population, which just, just reported, I believe, last week. One of the bright stars in that whole entire report was that Clackamas County probably has some of the largest decreases, especially for a county outside than anywhere else in the state. I think that's because of how we've governed, we've utilized these resources differently that are very narrow from the SHS tax. We have a little bit different worldview on how we approach this issue. We've been very successful with very talented staff, and we've been trying to be very visionary and targeted and mindful in the work that we do. I can't say that for everybody, or they've had the ability to be as successful as us. I want them to be as successful. But a lot of the problems that were, the critics were saying with the SHS tax have come to be fact and true. We know now that it's been true. It is, they are very narrow. I don't think that we, I would be shocked if the voters gave us right now another swing at this chair, because we have by no means earned the trust of the voters in this issue whatsoever, especially as the numbers increase, and it is expensive. We have spent gobs of money. Now, here's the fact. If money was solely the problem, we've already solved it, right? We have a governance problem, a leadership problem, of, of, an ideological, philosophical problem. We have a grifting problem. So, there's a lot of problems here on why we haven't seen the success we, we would hope to see after passing this tax. And I don't have confidence even as an elected, I have confidence of Clackamas, but I don't have a lot of confidence that Oregon is going to see in the next year or two even big movement on this. I don't. I am now governing, saying, we have this now, we do this now, we govern the right way now, we build the infrastructure, we do the best we can in Clackamas. But I am not taking this money as if it's just guaranteed to us. We're entrusted for 10 years, fix it. Well, we haven't done a great job in Oregon of doing that. And so, it would be hard for me to morally go back to the voters and say, please just give me another billion, or whatever that exorbitant number is. We've spent more than that statewide on trying to, like, throw money at this problem. But I think that that's a hard sell to hard-working Oregonians that are really feeling a pinch right now in this specific economic climate that we're in. So, I also don't want to see Metro continue to do more Metro creep, because I feel like Metro wants to claw back some of the local authority control and make it more restrictive for us to be creative at the funding. Part of the reason why I think we've been successful with Clackamas County is because we've been able to be really creative within even the restrictive environment on how these funds could be used. And so, I, I, I don't, I think there is somewhat of an effort here for Metro to continue to grow as an entity and to creep into this space, but I, I would, I would push back and believe that Clackamas County should have the role as being the local health authority, local housing authority, local behavioral health authority, and we have done it in a very credible way. So, if that's also their effort in making some of the changes, I would, I would, that would give me a little heartburn and pause also. So, I'll end with those comments, but I share a lot of your sentiments from both my colleagues.
Commissioner Scholl.
The Metro supportive housing services measure does not expire until 30 December, 2030, 31 December in the year 2030. That's seven years and 10 months from now. If there's any action taken to make this measure permanent, oh, by the way, at the rate of taxation, by the time we get to 2030, we're going to have seen well over $2 billion of taxes out of the pockets of business and people on this measure alone. If there's any action to make this measure permanent, I can think of no better stimulus for taking action to get this county outside of the Metro Taxation Authority. This is, this is absolutely, to say it's premature is ridiculous. You have seven years and 10 months on this supportive housing services measure to take action. By that time, if you don't see changes in Oregon housing, if you don't see changes in modification to the 1973 Senate Bill 100 that caused the urban code boundaries around our cities, if you don't see changes in homelessness, then no, like Commissioner West said, no amount of money is going to help it. If this, if this state doesn't have the guts to take the changes, to make the changes, to actually create a environment where we can afford homes, then taxing the people who can't afford to pay more taxes is not going to solve the problem. Somebody better put this idea to extend the supportive housing services measure to sleep for seven years and 10 months. Thank you.
Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, great discussion. I just want to just make an observation, again, stepping back from the big, you know, the metro regions, just looking at this from a state issue, and just expand on Commissioner West citing of the recent news we got on the 10% increase in homelessness in the state. Our numbers went down a little bit, so we were one of the few counties, I think three counties had, were going in the right direction, trending downwards, and the majority of the, again, the state's moving up the wrong direction. But most strikingly, the most striking number is where most of the supportive housing services are, are going, based on population, is Molloman County, and they had the highest increase. It was 29% increase in homelessness. To Commissioner Scholl's point, it's not about money. To Commissioner West's point, it's not about money. It's about really being sophisticated and approaching this holistically. And again, I think we're working in, in a vacuum, or parts of the state, or Metro, or whatnot, however this is all done. What, what is, what is the legislature doing right now? They're spending all their energy, it seems. It's not fair, but a lot of their energy is spent on Measure 110, is getting all the publicity, right? How come they're not up there arguing and talking about expanding mental health services and doing it now, making it a mandate? How come they're not talking about recovery systems, making that a mandate? Nope, we're arguing about a political football.
Yep.
It's a political football. And why aren't they listening to the people that actually work with those folks on a daily basis, like the DAs, the law enforcement, who are trying to help those people, have well-intended means of trying to help those people, and yet, they are arguing over, again, the politics of a Class A versus a Class C misdemeanor?
Yep.
It's a shame.
Okay, thank you.
We're just not meeting the needs.
In closing, I'd like to say on this, when we were presented with the poll, and I have the poll, and I have all the cross tabs and all the data, and the one question that Metro was stouting as approval was if, if you could add 5,200 new housing units per year with an adjustment, would you approve this? An adjustment. And it was 60% came back, and that was a big success. And I challenged them, and I challenged them to the point that I really made in Metro Council Mad, and I said, this is a lie. You're perpetuating a lie, and you were not honest in your poll questions. These are the questions you, I said, I've been around polling for the last 30 years and have done it and have studied it, and you asked the question of the answer that you wanted. By the way, I talked with some folks at the Portland Metro Chamber. They did a poll, too, and guess what? Their poll did not show approval. Is that a shocker? No. And a lot of the business community, some of our most powerful business community in the state, which is the Portland Metro Chamber, are wholly opposed to this. And I mentioned that. I says, if you don't have buy-in from the business community, you're going to fail because they're going to come out and they're going to kill this this year. So, that's where we're at on it. The business community would like to see a reduction in their taxes on this. So, if anybody who lives inside the metro area and gets their Portland General Electric bill, you're going to see a light item for this tax increase in there, because Portland General Electric has passed it on to you. So, if you live in this district, not only is your income taxed at this rate, but your electricity bill's taxed, you get to pay the tax twice. Oh, and if you go down to maybe Home Depot that's in the district, they have passed this tax on to you. So, how many different times do you think you're paying for this tax? It's a lot, because businesses will not eat it. They will pass it on to the consumer. So, this is why we cannot continue with this. And I'm, you know, I'm leaning towards Scholl over here. We need to get the heck out of Metro. I'm serious. We could, we could have our own tax. We could have our own tax if we wanted to, run it at half, as a third amount of money, and get more or better results doing it ourselves. And there's a lot of things going on with Metro. I want to go back to the legislative session and this business with Measure 110. The legislature's going to do what the legislature's going to do, and any statements we send down there are going to be treated as they always have been. But I want this board to focus on the one thing. We have one priority at the Oregon Legislature, commissioners, and you better start talking about it, and that's the $21 million for the courthouse. And I think we're getting all spun up in emotional, thinking, gee, I didn't get my way because I didn't get my statement. We've got $21 million, which is $10 million still short. So if you want to do some good work at the legislature, I suggest you start to pay attention to our checkbook and how we're going to pay our bills. Seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.